All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Boys are standing, motion carries. Please stand for a statement of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I call for motion to accept the consensus agenda as submitted. Anything to? Anything to separate and go on separately?
There isn't.
Alright, all those in favor then please say aye.
Aye.
Boys are standing, motion carries. Alright, um, moving on then to. Sorry about that, I'm not used to paper copies. Uh, the personnel report. Call for motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Anything to discuss? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Boys abstaining, motion carries. Uh, we have no standing committee reports today. Um, external information to the board, you have just an information item that's there. Exofficial student members report.
Yeah, so. This Friday, we have our winter fest dance at seven AM in the gym. To transal until tomorrow, I believe. And then all of our spring varsity JV and unified sports start on March thirteenth. Except for JV softball, which will be on the sixteenth. Our juniors and seniors and staff for staff valuable tournaments is tomorrow in the high school gym at four AM.
I know our game is at five.
So alright, so I think it starts at four, I think. Uh, scattered about. Um, our boys varsity basketball team had a sixty to thirty-nine victory in the class A1 semifinals at Bob State this past weekend. And they'll head back to Bob State on Saturday night to face the number one seed McKinley in the section six A1 finals at eight thirty. And then our men's swimming team, uh, their two hundred pre-rem and qualified for states before break. While setting a new school record and each member hit their best times ever that night. And it will be heading to the state championships the next week. And then last but not least, um, guys and dolls, our high school musical, um. Our performances are next Thursday, Friday and Saturday, um, tickets on sale online. And yeah, all the performances are at seven, see you all then.
Hey, any questions of our student member? Should we come out and support and we'll see him in the, uh, see him in the musical? Alright, uh, superintendent report.
Um, could you start with positions we're still looking for?
Okay, uh, we're in very, very good position, uh, and strong position right now. The drivers still remain an issue for us, right? The bus driving, we're constantly looking at ways to recruit and certainly retain our drivers. We're always looking at innovative, innovative and creative ways, should say, um, kind of bolster our staff in particular. So that's right now what we're looking for is bus driving. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next I wanted to talk about our March fifteenth Board of Education meeting. Um, I was hoping that we could bring that to March fourteenth. At that meeting, we also have Rick Timm's who, um, was going to come in on the fifteenth. He is available as well on the fourteenth. Rick is, uh, the individual who helps our district. Um, he's our consultant for our long-term financial planning and he's available on that night. So, um, I'll just throw that out to the group, certainly when you get to whatever you want.
Right, new business.
Just to add to the, to, to sports, uh, both I know that the girls and boys hockey teams, uh, reached the sectional finals as well. Um, the basketball game that you spoke about was our, our boys' basketball team getting to the section, they're going out of the sectional finals. So it's been a, a, a really great, uh, winter season for our student athletes. You guys seen guys and dolls, um, certainly excited, I was, I, I mentioned to Brayden before the meeting started here that he looks very, very awake. Considering it's this time of season for, um, for, for, for the musical, what time was, did you have? Till five, tomorrow seven, okay. I figured.
I like the Sunday morning one coming up now.
Sounds great. The, um, one thing I wanted to mention to the entire board and Bob and I talked about before the meeting a little bit. Our bids came back for the storage building for our facilities department and, um, the, the estimates or the estimate that we had. Wasn't as high as the bets. So we have, well, we, we have some decisions to make there. We, we still have time to make a decision on this. What we have coming back from our construction manager is, are, are the estimates for this whole first wave of work. So we're gonna, now, now that a more significant level of design's been done, we're gonna know if, geez. Are all of these items now higher in estimates? Or was? It, or was this kind of anomaly? Or of course, open as an anomaly, anomaly. If it's not, we're gonna have to bring the capital project committee back together and, you know, talk about some of the things that are a project, right? You know, I don't say that to set, set off any alarm. I just want you to know that, you know, the, the percent increase on that one building, even though we have some additional money built into the project. For this, you know, for the, the idea of escalation. It, the percent increase is just significant. Now again, this could just be this building. But if it's not, we're gonna certainly have to have some conversation about it, okay? We'll bring the group back together. On March seventeenth, we have our professional development day as part of that day, um, our local, uh, first responders. Police, uh, fire, ambulance, uh, will, will be all taking part in the afternoon as well. And high school, middle school campus will be doing an active shooter training drill here. Um, I, I always make sure that I thank them, it's, it's a lot of playing, a lot of work that they do for us to help, um, ma- make us. And our campus a safer place, so, uh, I want to thank them out of time. They're actually to tell you the kind of work that they're doing, they're, um, almost all of the same players are going to be in Wilson, that'll be their first. Uh, uh, they're in their district's first active shooter drill in the morning. And then that same group is going to be coming here, uh, to work with us in, in the afternoon. So again, we thank them for the, the time and energy that they've already put into it, but also the time that they'll put in once, uh, that they're here that day. That's all I have.
Any questions? Alright then, um, our finance, uh, report?
Okay, I know this is a repeat for most of you, so I, there's just a few things, um, that I wanna, um, spend a little bit of time on. I know there were some questions about a couple of the topics of the last meeting. Um, we've done a little bit of research of one particular case, so we can talk about that. Uh, so I'll go through some of this a little, a little bit, you know, kind of quickly, but if you have questions, please stop, okay? First, th- th- this first slide, I think one of the things I wanted to point out on here where you see the red and you see the decrease and you go, geez, how is there? Uh, how are, how is it negative, like example for the special services aid? No, th- this is only my guess, but I can tell you what, what we're seeing. That, that aid is based on money that you give back from students, or that aid is money that you get back from students who are in programs outside of our district. There's two, but, but, but let's break that down into two different categories. Programs outside of our district that are connected to BOCs and programs outside of our district not connected to BOCs. Well. BOCs like many districts have had trouble. Fill in positions and they don't have the, the amount of spaces and the amount of spots that we're looking for as a district for some of our alternative placements. As a result, and I, I know that that's in our region, okay? Um, that if, if, if you extrapolate that out and that's true throughout New York State. What's happening is this. You're getting, districts are getting less aid back because we get our aid ratio amount back for BOCs related services. We get a, a, a separate formula, which is less aid after it's after the first thirty thousand dollars for all private placements. So whenever we tell you how important BOCs is for districts, it's, you know, hugely important. My guess is that's why, you know, you go, well, wait, how are all these other amounts going up? But the, but the special services aid is going down. That's, that's aid that is returned to districts based on prior year. So does that make sense to everybody? So here, eh, eh, long story short. We continue to work with our BOCs and, and other BOCs in our region to. If, if they can expand, especially like example, special, um, education programming, so that we can, the more programming we can go through BOCs. The more money we receive back in aid the following year. So that's really important. Um, this was actually the, the, the year prior slide, if you remember. Um, there was a one point six million dollar increase in foundation aid, but what they said was the next year, they were going to give us the other fifty percent in our district, okay? So this year, the total amount is, is the, the total phase in is two point seven million dollars. And, um, what, what I want to say to that is this, it sounds like, it sounds like an enormous amount of money, it certainly is, but remember. Our district, there was a foundation aid formula that was in place. We were supposed to be receiving that amount of money and we weren't. So the idea that we're, we had a eight point eight percent increase in our foundation aid. That's kidding us, not above, but right at the number that we're supposed to be at for next school year. And this year that we're living in now, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, all those years before. We weren't getting what we were supposed to get in foundation aid. So now. The twenty-three, twenty-four school year, there, it's going to be the first time that they're fully funding the foundation program. Now, some districts have been receiving their amount all along. Some were actually considered overfunded. All of those districts have been held harmless. So when you see that three percent for twenty-one, twenty-two, they did the same thing in for twenty-two, twenty-three and for twenty-three, twenty-four. So if, if you were a district that's held harmless, you were still getting it in, in, in many cases, money, but you weren't getting. Like the eight point eight percent that we were getting, because we're finally now for next year, gonna be caught up with the foundation aid formula. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. I'm not gonna touch base on much more of this, this just shows the, the, the foundation aid increases. Um, I want to point to the bottom right-hand corner of this slide here. Um, if, if you look in that bottom corner, you can see what the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed foundation aid increases. I say proposed, because if you look at the top of this screen, it's the executive budget. Remember, this is only the governor, governor's proposal. This isn't the budget yet. That's been approved, that's went through the legislature. The twenty-three, twenty-four proposed foundation aid is a one point nine million dollar increase, that's that eight point eight percent. Um, and that gets you to the, the total foundation aid amount that you see there. The other number that's in green there, that's a one-year only. It's high-impact tutoring set aside. That's not new money though, it's not different money. That money is, we're expected to spend on tutoring next school year, it has to come out of that foundation aid amount. Okay? Here, this is just, uh, the, the executive budget proposal, okay? You can see the foundation aid number, that's the, and I always just point that out because that's the money that is the, the, in essence, the general fund money that we can, in essence, do whatever we need to do with. These other monies, there's, they're all part of our budget, but most, many of them are accounted for, or they're monies that have come back to us. Okay, that we then, that goes right back out. So an example of that would be, um, transportation aid. Transportation aid is money that, and you can see that, uh, let's see, uh, one, two, three, four, five, five, five down, right? The transportation, that goes back to us because that's aid after we've spent money on transportation. Right? Um, and then what, what do we do? We use that money to then spend money on transportation. Th- th- this is some of the stuff that I talked a little about, been about already with the, the set aside. More subject to this, I, we have to do this high-impact tutoring. One of the details of this, I know they did, they did at the last meeting. Do you have any questions on this? We, as you know, through the pandemic, we've been doing significant, um, tutoring for kids after school, in the summer. Uh, additional summer school, additional opportunities, engagement opportunities, all of those things. We're gonna, we're gonna continue to those, what they're saying though is they have to spend whatever was a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars on this next school year. Um, you can see here, uh, the, the, the tax levy compared to the tax cap, excuse me, compared to, um. The, the CPI or what's happened to that, uh, this year, and you can see that the CPI obviously inflation factor is really significant. All of you, all of us are experiencing that, maybe going to a store, um, I love eggs. I do, but we eat a lot of eggs. I don't, I am generally, you know, nothing like all my products. So, we like eggs, like, right? Protein, I'm sorry, it's a rich break. We, we see it all the time and that. O- one of the things I, I guess I just want to point out is that all of our costs are going up at a rate that are not equal to the amount of money that we have coming in. And you say, well, geez, you just got a little eight percent in foundation aid increase. That's all eaten up really quick and then when we start talking about our levy amount that we can levy, and I, um, talk about that in a minute. When you back to those two numbers together. I'm keeping up on inflation. You know, Allison talked about this, a little bit this meeting, or last meeting. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the, the, on the pilot or this formula. We'll talk, um, a little bit about the pilot a little bit more in the next meeting. Um, next meeting, we also have Rick Timm's, who's our long-term financial consultant coming in. So we'll get into a lot of detail related to a lot of those things. In, in the recalculation of the, uh, levy and the levy limit. I think initially the number was like two point seven something, two point nine, somewhere around two point eight percent, somewhere around there. Um, when going back and re- recalculating the carryover amount, taking out what couldn't be carried over. It's, it's two point one eight percent. So the levy limit is two point one eight percent. Okay? Any questions on that? Here, here you can see, um, what the levy has done and what that's done to the amount, well, both in dollars and what the percent increases that each year. Um, you know, point six eight, two point four nine, one seven one, one four nine, one nine nine, one nine nine. Issue the levy limit is two one eight, um, the seven-year average, if, if you, if you use the levy limit, it would be one point seven nine percent. Of those seven years. Questions on that? Um, here's the TRS rate, you can see that that's dropped a little bit, this is the teacher retirement system, right? That the district pays into. This is the ERS rate, you can see that that's gone up a little bit. The one point six to three point one, thirteen point one percent. We're gonna come back at the end and talk about the levy because we need to readjust it. This was a topic that I know was talked about, but we're gonna go to the last meeting. Our. Free kindergarten program, currently we have a hundred and forty-one slots, okay? There, uh, we have the ability to add a significant number of new slots. You can see the number there is ninety-three slots for next year. We have not filled the hundred and forty-one, I think this year we're like one twenty-one, one twenty-three, somewhere around there is number of slots. And I, I, I understand some of the conversation at the last meeting involved around, um, transportation to, to, um, the program. So there's a few things I want to know. One, um, you don't get aid on transportation to a pre-K program. If students were riding in on our, on our regular buses, in essence, they'd be covered, but. Adding separate transportation to like, to the buddy bunch would be a cost that the district would have to, to, to eat along, okay? With no, with no aid. The, the other concern, the other, the other issue, um, is that right now we don't have drivers. Okay, as everybody knows, it's very difficult, uh, drivers. And the, 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 the timing of the program right now is a five-hour program and it's from nine to two. We have flexibility with that program. We could, we could certainly move it back a little bit, we, but here, here's the, the biggest issue. Moving a five-hour program and not hitting a time period of the day that is the highest traffic for. School transportation is next to us. Cause if you move it up and you go like, or still at four o'clock, our elementary runs are just, are just bleeding. So yeah, so we can do the eleven o'clock easy, that is that great for families, right? If they're probably gonna drop their kids off here, right, or somebody picking them up, you know, a little bit earlier in the morning has to work for our families, for moving to the. School in, in, in general. Um, so, so what, what we're doing, but just so you know, we, um, are putting out a survey. To our current pre-K kids and to our kindergarten students. Asking the families of the current students. Had transportation been available, would you have taken it to our kindergarten? Would you have taken it if you were in it? So there's, there were some kids were in it, but what do you take into account it? Or you, you were kindergarten, your kid didn't take part in a pre-K program? Had we had transportation, would you have taken it? Those are the questions that we want to get to. What we're asking them, just so you know, when you see the, if you see the survey. I need sure there's a, there's a line in there that says, I, I, we, we don't know in essence if we can do it. We know that it's a struggle to have the, the transportation that we have now, we know that it would be additional cost. Now, that cost can be covered if we chose to do it by title funds. The transportation cost, okay? But that means you're not covering something else with tra- with, with title cost. So, so we, we want, we want to see first of all, if there would be a significant number of kids impacted. If there is, then what we have to do is find out. You know, we just don't have drivers. And we can't put them on our own buses, because our buses are full. So it's not like using Colonial Village as an example. The buses that are pulling in right now that are kindergarten to fifth grade are full. And we, we, we couldn't say we, you know, those, they, whatever, they, they could need to have two or three more kids on them. There's, space doesn't, doesn't exist. So we probably have to contract out this. And then what you're looking at potentially, and I just want to hear all of this, is. I don't know, anywhere between six and nine runs, you know, buses that you'd have to have? Because using CBI as an example, if, if you just said we're protecting them, the kids, just someone bus. You know, along, the first kid would be on the bus. If one bus transit right now, let's say there's eight buses, if one covered that whole zone to pick kids up and then drove down to buddy lunch. Two might work. It's probably more realistic. In each of the three zones. Now, the zone doesn't really, you could certainly have kids that you're picking up from CB and also West Year Prep, you could certainly do that. Look at that, so maybe you're looking at six, seven. But we'd have to look at all of that based on the number of students who we knew were interested. The data, just, uh, let me give you one data point, okay? Looking at our kindergarten students in their winter assessment. There was a. About twenty percent increase was in the number of high-risk students. From students who took part in a pre-K program versus those that didn't. Uh, twenty percent. In twenty percent more students were deemed high-risk based on the assessment, uh, that they were in the, the, what we don't know. Is how many of those students didn't take part in pre-K at all versus took part in some other program? It's, we don't know that one, easy way to find that out.
You're saying twenty percent increase from when?
So, no, no, so if you take our kindergarten students.
Right.
There's the students who took part in our pre-K program versus the students who didn't take part in our pre-K program. The students who didn't take part in our pre-K program, twenty percent more of them fell into the high-risk category after the assessment.
Okay.
And, uh, there's certainly. Uh. A, 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 a statistical difference in the number of students who are not taking part in our pre-K program from, or schools from CB. It was just so happens to be the furthest away from it, so if there's a transportation issue.
Right.
Uh, of, of some level, it's even further in margin. There's some potential, okay?
I understand you want to ask the question. We may not like the answer, depending on what side the answer are. And it's, it's, it's not about not liking the answer. The answer doesn't come back a certain way. I don't know what we can do about it. For short bus drivers, I know you have other, uh, fires in a fire. Well, may have a difficult budget. I mean, you indicated, I mean, the school needs the money. You indicate we're not keeping up with inflation. But our residents aren't keeping up with inflation either. They pay the same parades and, and you know, you, you know that and, uh, their, their wages aren't going up with the rate of inflation. So I think we gotta be careful about, I mean, you want to ask the question, that's, that's your call, but. We gotta be careful about answering the questions because if we get a majority one way, we're in trouble if we try to help out.
And, and you know, Rick, the, the, the question I would never worry is, um, you know, do you want us to do it? We're just trying to see where, where the need might be, right? Um, I just don't wanna, I want to make sure that in some cases, the students, you know, I think sadly, right? Some cases, students who maybe need it the most are the ones who don't have transportation to get there. And therefore, and, uh, starting from that, so you're right. I mean, I don't know that we're gonna have a solution for it, but I. I still want to know, I still want us to know. Right, because if things change, if, you know, all those things, like we, we would know that we could then. Act on it, so maybe perhaps they changes, one, one of the things that we can't understand is why the funding for UPK can't be used for this. If the true goal is to get. All students, because this is, we've heard this certainly from. The, uh, the leadership in the, in the education department, from the governor, getting kids to take part in this program. Well, that can be different for funding, right? So, you know, I, I, I would almost see some of our data being used that way. To say to New York State, hey, you've said you want all the kids to be able to take part in this program. Well, guess who in some cases can? The ones who financially can't afford to get there to the program, so. Maybe they consider that.
You know, and, and I feel bad for that, of course, I feel awful, because there are, and I know there's many out there that have kids that could need it. Yeah, they really can't afford, they don't have a vehicle, they got one vehicle. Uh, is there any way legally we can separate a group like that?
That's a great question.
See, you use free and reduced lunch qualifications to separate.
You know. Here, here's the thing, we know that no matter what, a number of parents are gonna drive. Here here's the thing, we know that no matter what, the number of parents are gonna drive. Right, they already do, for a lot of different reasons. So, you know, we we, that that's why remember I say, you know, I I I don't know what the need is, and how many would say, you know, we really take you up on it. How many are we really talking about? I think that could help us, and because it's not mandatory. We may have a little bit more leeway as to how many people we transport, right? So, yeah, I think there's there's still more questions than than that answers, but I think um. That it's it's a good, everything that you said, hundred percent true, right? And 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 you know, you're you're, yeah, those are the, the those are the situations that you go, geez, is there a way to to do this for people? Really just really can't. I I I could see, you know, if our data shows that we have significant number of kids who do this, now I start talking to other districts. Is your data showing me the same thing? Or can you, so here are the questions we asked, you're taking, now you ask. And if they ask, and now a bunch of people are saying, hey, we we if we wanna make this. Something that's a jumpstart for kids, and we're all kids who participate, um that we need to find a way to. They 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 found a way, I mean, you know, we were at a hundred and forty one slots for. The all all the years of the program, I forget how many, I mean, we, we learned how, okay? So, we we we've had it for 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 four years now, they just jumped up to ninety one. If they're saying that they can budget that amount of money for us, by, and we know we're not gonna fill those slots, why couldn't we utilize that money for transportation?
I I know it came up, Rick, one of the last time, but uh. It's pre K four, that money can't go for buses, correct?
Correct.
The money, that that extra ninety two won't be utilized. The way we're sitting right now. Won't be utilized, nothing. Um pre K three, is that a, is that something we look at? If we can't.
It's a separate, it's a completely separate uh application process for it.
Oh, it's separate? I thought it was universal, okay. I mean, just saying, that that increased didn't go anywhere, if we're not filling what we already have.
You know, I mean, I think so, so you're on the question, right? If you had a significant number of people said, yeah, let's have my kid. Then we look at that number and we say, is there any way to do anything more with this number? If we don't, then it's pretty, it's, we stop right there, right? But the the it, we're gonna let the data like tell us how far and how hard we need to push, we need to push with this. Um because when when you look at the 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 amount of extra funds that are there. If if we even got up to the one forty one, one fifty number, I mean, you had ninety three slots to our. To our one forty one, what is that, two thirty four? Right, I mean, well, I don't expect that we're gonna be anywhere near this. Matter of fact, the class coming in is like right around that number. You know, some people don't wanna send, and some people send their kids to other places that they wanna send them. Places maybe that have, you know, other programs that they're interested in, or it might be, so. More questions still to ask.
With the ninety one they asked, uh they increased, do we have a number of, yeah, how much that is for a value?
So it's it's right there, it's that extra five, five oh two? That's the new, you, so it's about half nine dollars.
Well, that that would be great if it gives them the news app for transportation.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree, and I think that, though, we're gonna have to give them a big little noise, out ahead and tell them, but here's why. We 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 need it, um you know, here's the other thing. If we were to, if we got to our one forty one next year, we'd be okay. If for some reason we got to two hundred, buddy bunch would have to, those are addition. I'm not kidding, but they would do it, but we we would need to let them know if all of a sudden the number of people who wanna predict this. All of a sudden dramatically increases.
I don't know if families find out about pre K, what happens, we promoted or?
We were just wanting to talk.
Of course, you know, our district signage, as well as signboards and placards that we put in front of all the schools, certain designated intersections across. You know, the school district, also advertisement, we're gonna be doing actually one next week. So that's both through Sentinel, Blackboard, Sun Journal, is that?
Goes out through all, through to all of our families if they already have kids in the system. They kind of know about, they're the ones who kind of know about it more often than not, right, but it goes out to them as well.
Good question.
Other questions on U P K, they're all really good ones. This was stress ratings, still really low, very good, you know, the only reason that our fiscal stress rating is ever a number, not zero, is be. Because of our um our cash flow. Right, we know that we always carry that burden, um uh that we, financial burden. Of having to front the money for Tuscaloosa School before we get reversed out. Good news is, that money's been coming in very regularly, which is why the stress rating isn't significantly higher, right? But because that amount of money is actually. Almost our entire unappropriated fund balance, if not more, or it it always puts us in a little bit of a of an issue with cash flow. Electric school buses. I don't wanna talk a little about a lot about this right now, and but just a quick recap, the expectations that we start buying with. If legislation doesn't change, and that by twenty thirty five, they're all turned over. Um they're really, really, really expensive now. So we're not in a rush to start buying them, some have tested, there's testing them out right now, um like individual few buses. Pretty expensive endeavor, and when you start buying them, remember, we buy our buses, we're restricted reserve for buses. And um you know, almost a two and a half times increase in cost, we don't wanna purchase those until we need to.
Uh if they negotiated later days, would that be in this year's budget? It would be part of the package, right? Or is that?
Oh, for this, this this like, well, this this legislation could be, it it could be separate from this, it could be included in this. Um you know, they can always legislate, right? So they could, they they could make changes from this at any point, if they chose. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Just that we're not gonna exceed that new number.
Yeah, I will make the motion to accept a new amended tax levy limit of two point one eight, is there a second? Second, and all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, portion of standing, carries. All right, item for board discussion, um is the movement of that um the date for the next meeting. To the fourteenth and the fifteenth? Fifteen, yeah, that's what I meant, you know what I meant. Uh I know you won't be able to make it, is, but I, there is a conflict that superintendent has that night, I'd rather him be here at the meeting for that. No, no, it's just, uh, just if we can, you know, if if you guys are.
Have majorities, though.
Yeah.
You you might want a motion only because it's part of the calendar.
Okay, but actually, we didn't accept that calendar, we just.
That's a great question.
We didn't move to accept the budget calendar.
Not the budget calendar, the.
Oh, it's a regular, yeah.
It's it's a regular board meeting, and that's, you you approve that calendar or something.
All right, um I'll call for motion to move the meeting then from the fifteenth to the fourteenth. Instant second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, boys abstaining, it carries.
I understand.
It's for Danny.
I don't have.
He's gotta play dad.
I should.
Um any old business? A new business? Oh, comments, no one, all right, uh board member comments. My thing is, just remember, make sure you got to see the show. Go see it multiple times, they can use the uh the ticket sales. So, Rick, I wanna see you there all three times.
I'm gonna be there for sure one, I gotta look at the schedule, but I'm sure one. But I I can buy a ticket at the door, right?
Yes, they are selling at the door as well, yeah, they're doing it online, you can go online or buy them at the door. Yep.
All right, then, um I'll call for motion to adjourn. All those in the favor, please say aye. Aye, boys abstaining, we're adjourned.